At this thing and the fire departments are gonna do it. So at first it seemed like it was gonna be maybe a derogatory to the system, but it ended up enhancing the system. And now the fire department fully sports Sparkle Love and we, and Lenore, and we run it out of the fire station now. So if you go by Crotton Hills Fire Station during the month of December, half the bay is literally Santa's workshop. So Brenda's her daughter. She kinda took the technology, so all the online stuff, everything and assorting and all that, kinda brought us up to the new millennium and helping Lenore. She said she's old school and she doesn't do that. So Brett, that's where Brenda came in. And then Captain Pay runs everything for logistics for us. He deals with Sparkle Love. He gets the donation boxes, drop off, pickup, a lot of extra work that they definitely don't need to do that they do for our community. So last year in the Sparkle Love Toy Drive, we were able to gift 367 children here in Ucaipa from over 106 families, not counting the three churches that we ran their toy drive donations from. And I don't know if we have numbers on those, but it was several hundred children here in Ucaipa. So those donations come here and they stay here unless we need to help out, kinda like mutual aid. Just, it's a phenomenal program without saying I wanted to recognize them for all the work they do. I know everybody, November, December, people wanna spend time with their families and they're there at the station going through and making sure folks and kids have a good Christmas. So with that, you know, they have a servant's heart and I think they deserve our recognition.
So we would like to get our photos with you. And we have a recognition we'd like to present to the three of you. So I'm gonna read the recognition real quick. It says, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to Captain Travis Pay, Lenore Will, and Brenda Martinez for your outstanding leadership in service of the City of Ucaipa. Your dedication to serve and help those in need provides inspiration to all and leaves an incredible mark on the community of Ucaipa. On behalf of the City Council, staff, and the community of Ucaipa, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation for your service." Signed, City Council.
Hi, I am Scott Ward. I am here representing San Bernardino County Third District Supervisor Dawn Rau. I cannot really add anything to the great things that have already been said about you, but when I heard your story, I thought about that quote. I had to print it so I wouldn't screw it up. A hundred years from now, it's not gonna matter what kinda car you drove, what kinda house you lived in, how much money you had in the bank. What will matter is if you made a difference in the life of a child. And I think you've done that. And I don't think you're gonna have to wait a hundred years to see, you know, to see the result of that. These kids are gonna know that someone was kind to them and made Christmas a little bit better. And maybe they'll help pass it on for a future generation. So on behalf of Supervisor Rau and the entire Board of Supervisors for San Bernardino County, we thank you for what you've done for the community.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Sidney Song. I'm here on behalf of Senator Choa Bog's office. We also made beautiful certificates for the three of you. Captain Pay, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Will. We wanna recognize you especially for your generosity, your efforts in collecting toys for our children and connecting the youth with resources. I mean, that's deserving of our highest commendation. So on behalf of the senator, we thank you for your efforts.
We're gonna do another series of photos real quick here. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, now we want a public comment. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker slip in the back of the room and hand it to our city clerk. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak on an item. This is a time to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. So with that, we have our first speaker, Christine Muller.
Thank you. Christine Muller, Fawn Ridge Place in Ucaipa here. God, I hate going after that. That was such a great story. I just wanted to, I know Justin helped me out and I know you know about it, Justin, but the week of Christmas, my family had something go on that I wanted to share with you and I think that you can make a difference. My daughter was working out at Fitness 19 and apparently somebody walked in with a bolt cutter and cut her lock off the locker and stole her, she just had a jacket and the keys to her car. And in the interim, before she realized that the car was stolen, I was doing Christmas things in my formal living room, which is my form, my door. And my door was locked and somebody used the keys to get into my door. And I was standing there and I have dogs and I thought it was my son. And so I was gonna rush the door so the dogs didn't get out and greet my son, who's coming home. And it was a woman who was coming into my house. Well, it turns out that she stole my daughter's keys from Fitness 19, stole her registration and the garage door opener and her sunglasses and came into my house with her keys. My beef isn't with the sheriffs because they're doing everything they can. And I called our mayor right away and city manager who's helping me. My beef is with Fitness 19. As my daughter is crying her eyes out in front of Fitness 19, two people approached her with the same issue. And it's, you know, even Captain Landon has said that this has happened to numerous people in our community. So I'm gonna hold them responsible. And I'm not mad, well, I'm mad about the whole situation on Christmas week. In my house, through my threshold, somebody came through my door who's still not caught and tried to rob my house and is, you know, that's just not right. My door was locked. So this has happened numerous times and everybody's aware of it. And apparently it happens in other communities as well. It's a ring. My beef is with Fitness 19. They signed in with the wrong name and the wrong number. They're responsible for protecting the City of Ucaipa and its constituents and the people that pay for it. So the fact that they didn't do what they're supposed to do. And I wanna see changes. If they're not gonna affect change, and you know that are citizens, I was prey because Fitness 19 didn't do their job and they're not returning my calls. So I'm leaning on you guys to do something. I've been a citizen of this community for over 30 years and that's not acceptable with me. So I want you to hold them accountable. They're not answering my calls, but they're gonna answer yours. And I'd also like to thank Ray Casey, city staff. We're gonna sleep really well tonight when O'Glenn is worried about Washington down the road. I wanna appreciate all your water projects, your basins, your low water crossings, all the grants, all the monies and all the, the people that you worked with, the IERDC, the state, the water boards. I wanna thank you for everything you do tonight that you've done so we can sleep well tonight.
Next speaker, Mike Simon.
Good evening, council and guests. What I'm talking about is three separate items. From County Line to Live Oak, Calamasa Boulevard has more potholes in it than I've ever seen anywhere. Somebody in a smart car is gonna go down there and lose their car is how bad it is. Also, on Calamasa Boulevard and on Wildwood Canyon from Calamasa East, the trash is collecting over and over again and nobody's picking it up. Caltrans is picking up their side of the street, but you're not. Also, I'm sure you're aware of the homeless problem in Calamasa is getting worse. They're dumping them out here from Los Angeles. I went over to Starbucks the other day. There were five people standing there asking for handouts. Same thing at all these Staters and Albertsons. You've got an empty building on Fifth and H that used to be the old Beaver Medical Center. I know there's grants available. Is there some way you can get grant money to put the homeless in there so we know where they're corralled at and have an idea? Because it's LA shipping their people out here and we don't have room for them out here. It's, Ucaipa's been a nice quiet area and so is Calamasa. With all these homeless, it's making it really bad for people who live here. The handouts, the thefts. So anything you guys could do, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Richard Frost.
Yeah, Richard Frost, 1271 Third Street, Ucaipa. Yeah, I was just wondering, this is, I don't, this might be a county issue, but I was walking down Third Street and this dog jumps up on me and he starts following me home. So I just lost him. And then I saw a thing, it's kind of a legal question, but I'm not an attorney, but I was a legal clerk in the military once. But, and so I found he was, ended up in the divorce shelter. There was a picture of him. And everybody was, you know, they bid on him after a while. And everybody was bidding on this dog. I could tell it was, it belonged to somebody. And so I finally, I called him up and they said, well, you know, I just wanna know about the dog. And he said, well, they, a lot of people want that dog. I mean, it's a young valuable dog. And it was on a Thursday and said, well, they're gonna have, they're gonna have a drawing the next day. And they only wait five days until they, you know, they put up these dogs for adoption. Some never get adopted, but most do. And I was wondering why it's such a short time? Because if, or people should at least know about this, if you lose your dog and it's in the shelter, you better act pretty quickly. But I did find the owner. I had an idea where the owner might be. And I talked to him and I said, oh yeah, we've been looking all over for that dog. And the husband went up and got the dog and thanked me. But I didn't realize it was such a short time that the shelter, you know, holds on to dogs. Because you better act fast if your dog is lost, you know.
Next speaker is Kathy Sellers.
Good evening. Kathy Sellers, on behalf of the concerned owners of the North Bench. To quote the parting words of Mayor David Avila, "After years of dedication, it is your job as citizens to make sure we go in the direction you want it to go. It was obvious that night that he and Greg Bog have a lasting legacy of respect and admiration for their combined years of service to the citizens of Ucaipa. We now have before us the current council, Mayor Justin Beaver and John Thorpe, who are both law enforcement officers, who are known for having a very reliable moral compass, someone who actually has the courage of their convictions. This I know as being married to a 40-year law enforcement veteran guided by an immaculate moral compass. I've been assured that Chris Venable is his own man who won't cave to undue influence and will do what's right for the city and the people who elected him. Then we come to Bobby Duncan and Matt Garner, who give us great cause for concern. It's a strong belief that Mr. Duncan has an ambitious plan and we were greatly surprised when he acquiesced to Justin Beaver becoming mayor. Was that calculated? Mr. Garner, you won the election by 62 votes, 1.5% over Cheryl and Long. That is hardly a mandate by the voters of District One. In fact, a large portion of those voters have clearly stated that they don't want you involved in our city government or policymaking. You used clever advertising that is mostly false, that could be described as unethical and deceitful. The disgusting mailers sent to voters based on conflicting political affiliation will forever be a stain on your character. What people say behind your back is your standing in the community in which you live. It is interesting to note that reports are you spent $40,000 on your campaign for a city council seat that pays $7,000 a year. Who is the High Desert Jobs Political Action Committee that contributed to your race? Will you be beholden to the special interest groups who supported your campaign? Or will you be held accountable under the newly enacted Senate Bill 1439 that prohibits voting on developments connected to your political contributions? It's easy to figure all that out based on your FTPC 497 filings. As a side note, I met my husband when I was a court reporter on a lengthy political corruption trial and he was the lead district attorney investigator. We are well-versed in the chicanery or trickery used behind closed doors to achieve a political and financial purpose. What is the opposite definition of chicanery? Forthrightness, honesty, openness, and truthfulness. The National League of Cities states that council members are responsible for and responsive to the citizens who elected them. Tonight's agenda shows a closed-door session for performance evaluation dismissal and appointment of the city manager and city attorney. Why? Mr. Casey's contract was just renewed through 2024 with a salary approaching $300,000. If he's let go, are the citizens of Ucaipa obligated to pay that salary? It is heavily rumored that Chris Mann, who owns Mann Communications, hired for your political strategy, is being chosen for the next city manager. Is this a pay-for-play scenario? We're already suspicious about some of the newly appointed planning commission members who are there to do your bidding. Character is like a tree and reputation like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it. The tree is the real thing. Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Denise Work.
Good evening. Denise Work, 37202 Lima Killen Drive. Couple new faces up here I haven't seen. I don't know what prompted the city council's closed session this evening regarding the employment of our city manager, so I'm just gonna talk about what I do know. I know Ray Casey and I've known him for almost 30 years, all of which is not personal. It's all been within the city. And when he took over as city manager, I don't think we skipped a beat. And that was from, you know, Choker, who did just such an awesome job. I know when I served on the San Bernardino County Flood Control Committee, there were many other cities that truly needed to take flood control measures. But because of Ray's efforts, we were ready. We were the only city that was shovel-ready. And as a result of that and other grants, we received the county funding for the Wilson Creek project. Because of that project, the homes in the Dunlap were removed from a flood plain and became eligible to purchase insurance. I also know, I served as the chairperson with Ray on the Oversight Committee to the Successor Agency of the Redevelopment Agency. What a name. When other cities in California were filing for bankruptcy, we were ready. The pandemic hit and we were ready. Time doesn't allow me to address all of the things that Ray has accomplished, but they include the city hall, revitalizing of town, Y-PAC Community Center. It's not by chance the city has remained solvent all these years through all of these trials. The city councils come and go. You guys are all different than when I served on, began on Planning Commission. But everything else has remained solvent and the same under Ray's at the helm. He has maintained a steady hand. So I ask each of you, well, prayerfully consider these things that I'm telling you of my own experience. And I thank you. God bless Ucaipa and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dick Riddell.
I'm, I think everyone knows me, I'm Dick Riddell. I served for over 25 years on the city council. 13 of those years as mayor. I also served for 25 years on the San Bernardino Association of Governments Board of Directors. And I also served 25 years on Omni Trans Board of Directors. I also served on many county and inner-city committees and was a member of the California League of Cities. So I think I can speak with some authority and wisdom. During Ray Casey's tenure at city manager, we built state-of-the-art buildings, improved and expanded our park system, improved our infrastructure, roads, curbs and sidewalks, built 13 bridges and box coverages over our river crossings, improved flood control and water conservation facilities, brought new business into town, and improved services to the public. All this without going into debt or raising taxes. We always had a surplus of money every year for rainy days and unforeseen circumstances. Ray also served on Sandbags Staff Committees in the Leadership Position and the League of Cities in Leadership Positions and the City Manager Council in Leadership Positions. He received the League of Cities Annual Award for the Most Outstanding Public Servant. He was recognized throughout the Inland Empire as the most outstanding city manager in the entire region. During this time, the city council always voted Ray as outstanding in his annual presumptuous performance evaluations. Not by a three-to-two vote, not by a four-to-one vote, but unanimously by the city council, unanimously outstanding, including by one member who is still on our city council. It seems strange to me that this item is being considered now when two new members of the city council haven't yet served a complete meeting. Maybe it should be postponed at least for six months or a year so they can better evaluate Ray Casey. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Robin Miskin.
Good evening. My name is Robin Miskin. I live at 35472 Ivy Avenue. First, I wanted to inform our city council that the mail was stolen on Ivy Avenue on January 2nd and 4th. And because of that, one morning, just on Friday, following that, my husband and I were out on a walk and we found a bunch of mail, including a letter from the city regarding the Serrano State's project laying in the street with this mail. And so we are respectfully asking you to re-mail those letters and to extend the deadline because all of the mail in every mailbox was opened and stolen. And we don't know what's causing this. Secondly, I'd like to address the closed-session topic of terminating our city manager Ray Casey and city attorney Dave Snow. What prompted this action? Why are we revisiting this now when the city renewed Ray Casey's contract in October for two years? What has happened since then? At the last city council meeting, Ray Casey and city staff were praised for their work. And in the State of the City video produced in August, Councilman Bobby Duncan stated, and I quote, "The City of Ucaipa has one of the most amazing city staff that I have worked with in my life and career. They are amazing. They are very well-trained and educated and they're diligent. They work hard with good leadership. Ray Casey does a good job with the staff and the staff directors, et cetera." Councilman Matt Garner, let me, let me just go into something else first. Why would we waste the city's money to pay off these contracts? Is this fiscally responsible? When Councilman Matt Garner ran, his literature that he posted to all of us said that he would be fiscally responsible in his leadership and his, if he was elected. Who is going to pay off these hundreds of thousands of dollars in their contracts when the money could be used for other things that we need the money for here in the city? The citizens of Ucaipa want to know, what is The citizens of Ucaipa want to know what is driving this and what appears to all of us as hurried and impulsive measures when our new councilmen have not been in office very long? How can they make a responsible and well-informed vote tonight? When we, when the vote is taken tonight, the citizens want to know how each of you voted and why. And we want the truth of each claim. I also want you to know that I concur with Kelly Sellers, who came up and spoke tonight. I did not know what she was going to say. I too want to know who is behind the negative literature posted of Sherilyn Long. Why would you allow that to happen, Matt Garner, against someone that I know personally and that the literature was false? Who paid for it? Is this the first time this has happened in Ucaipa? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kevin Miskin.
First of all, I would just like to, my name's Kevin Miskin. I live on Ivy Street in Ucaipa, been there for over 20 years. First of all, I want to recognize our dear mayor, Mayor Riddell. I have three sons that were Eagle Scouts, and Mayor Riddell attended all three of their Courts of Honor. Tonight, we have with us, interestingly, Mayor, former Mayor Riddell. And I saw in the back Mayor Avila, and I saw Mayor Boge also here. I think we're all here for the same reason, and we have deep, deep concerns. Many citizens and my neighbors were very surprised and shocked to see the closed session agenda posted just a few days ago in which the city council is considering, after just one meeting in December, just before the holiday, that you'll be considering terminating and replacing city manager Ray Casey and city attorney Dave Snow. In the last city council meeting, Mayor David Avila and city councilman Greg Boge praised Ray Casey and city staff for their work. Previous mayor Greg Boge cited numerous beneficial projects to Ucaipa conducted under Ray Casey, particularly the flood control projects. Ray Casey is a well-known and respected figure throughout Southern California. I've never really personally met him or talked to Dave Snow. Ucaipa city manager Ray Casey was the recipient of the James S. Thalman Memorial Public Service Award by the League of California Cities. This public service award recognizes the contributions of an outstanding municipal official who demonstrates integrity and commitment in advocating for the important causes of local government. Ray has served Ucaipa for 20 years. Mayor Hoyt was quoted, "Mr. Casey is certainly deserving of this recognition and sets an example for others to follow, particularly in his contributions to the city, the county, and even the state." Close quote. Just a few months ago, the city council recently voted to extend Ray Casey's contract. We, the citizens of Ucaipa, have some questions for the city council. With this city council sitting for just two weeks, and this being the first full city council, why rush to terminate a well-respected city manager and the city attorney that were praised just two weeks ago? What could have possibly transpired in two weeks to warrant termination? What changed? From the vantage point of all of the citizens and those that are here with me today, the only change is the city council. If they were instructed, well, with only two weeks in office, how do councilmen Garner and Venable have sufficient experience with these two individuals to make an informed decision? If they were instructed by others, where did that information come from? What political agenda or bone to pick motivated this rush? Who is being proposed for these positions? And what relationship do the city councilmen have with those people that are being proposed? If Ray Casey and Dave Snow are terminated, how many millions of dollars of taxpayer money will be wasted to pay off these contracts? Your responses will likely elicit other questions and actions from the citizens and will address those at the next city council.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is George Sardison.
George Sardison, 12451 Custer Street, mayor and councilmembers. The last time I spoke at a council meeting was shortly after the November election, when I personally and publicly thanked councilmembers David Avila and Greg Boge for their years of service to our city and for serving with integrity and honesty and no personal or hidden agenda. Tonight, I express the same sentiment to our city staff under the leadership of city manager Ray Casey. Mr. Casey has a reputation in the Inland Empire that is above reproach, leading us through the COVID-19 pandemic, managing our $30 million budget with great care, and guiding the city into a bright future. Mr. Casey, you are a wanted man, wanted by the citizens of Ucaipa to continue your leadership of our great city. Regarding tonight's agenda, in the spirit of transparency and open government, who are the councilmembers that asked to have a closed session regarding performance evaluation dismissal or appointment of the city manager? And for what purpose? On October 24th, the council voted four to zero, with Greg Boge absent, to approve the employment of the city manager, extending the agreement through June 30th, 2024. What has changed since then? This is only the first full meeting for the two new councilmembers, and one would hope that they would see fit to recuse themselves from any discussion regarding the performance of the city manager, considering they've been in office less than 30 days. One only has to wonder, who's leading who in this matter? I'm asking right now for all councilmembers to state their position on the need for this closed-door session so that the public can see how transparent they are going to be as our elected representatives.
Thank you. The next speaker is Craig Heaps.
Mayor Beaver, councilmen's members, good evening. Entirely different topic. On July 13th of 2022, item number three on the consent calendar, I know all of you weren't on the council that time, but the city authorized on-call professional environmental review services for public and private development projects for the years 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2022. Something that we've never had to dealt with on private projects. Less than one month later, on August 8th of 2022, staff report came to council to extend these services through 2022, 23, and 2023, 24. This has created undue hardship for land developments for private projects. Staff represented the increases would cost no more to developers than 25% to 30%. It is, in fact, much, much, much higher than that. Councilmember Thorp, Councilman Thorp raised many key issues. Your concerns were costs and timing. I think Mayor Avalon, at the same time, raised some concerns as well. It was agreed that this would be a topic addressed in February of 2023, brought back within a six-month period. I have several projects that, right now, are stuck within the system because of associated on-call costs. It's an issue for my company, it's an issue for my clients. I did meet with city manager Casey, and he has agreed, and I have every right to believe it will happen, to have this on the January 23rd city council agenda. This is very, very important that it be on the agenda at that time for us as we need to move these projects forward. I'm asking council to direct staff to make sure it's on that January 23rd city council agenda, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public comment speaker is Cecilia Johns.
Good evening. Cecilia Johns, 33175 Colorado Street. I have resided in Ucaipa for 35 years, long before we became a city. Ucaipa is a unique town that is the envy of our neighboring communities. We have many amenities that make me proud to live here. Thanks to the leadership of our city manager Ray Casey and his staff, the citizens pay attention to what is on the council agenda, even the closed-session items. The rumor mill is running at full speed with talks of how one council member is determined to unleash his personal vendetta on the city and will get rid of anyone who has opposed him in any way. If it's true, what a sad excuse for an elected official. With only one month in office, the two new councilmembers need to take at least six months to get the lay of the land, so to speak. At City Hall and back away from any closed-door discussion of this nature, it's called being your own man. It's what the community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any councilmember who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? We have a first and a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor and councilmember business reports. Is there any councilmember who has any business to report? Okay, moving on to possible action on pending legislation. Is there anything to report under pending legislation, sir?
Nothing on pending legislation this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to department reports. Item number four, the monthly treasures report, November 2022. This is a receiving file by Philip White.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. In your packets this evening, you have the treasures report for the month ended, November of 2022. The key items to report, thank you. The key items in relation to the treasures report is that all investments that are held are held in compliance with the city's investment policy. In accordance with the investment policy, the city maintains liquidity for the next six months, and those, both of those assertions are made on the attachment within that treasures report. I do have a presentation for you this evening. Beginning with a summarized balance of the investment portfolio. You can see that there are three components of our balance of $54 million. The first is the treasure-managed cash investment balance of $33.9 million. There's a PFM managed piece of the portfolio that's valued at $16.7 million. And the remaining component is a $3.5 million dollar amount of cash investment held with fiscal agent, totaling, again, $54.1 million. Those investment portfolio balances are dependent on our policies and the city's fiscal methodology for building infrastructure and funding operations. So a couple of points with our economic investment methodology. The first is the city, I think it was mentioned earlier, the city has no outstanding debt. We fund all of our infrastructure with cash, with savings, and we don't carry outstanding debt. Second point is, we'll go through our historical treasury balances, but over the course of, over a decade, those balances have remained intact. Third, we can see the economic return displayed on our investment using a trend analysis, and that will show long-term results of our investment. We'll get into that. We can evaluate our fiscal policy, again, using trend analysis, and that will show, in case of a fiscal crisis, our available cash to work through that crisis. And finally, we will see that the infrastructure projects that we've invested in have a significant long-term impact on the general fund. So in order to do that, the financial statements can be used to tell the story of the city's fiscal policy. Couple of things, this is a copy of the balance sheet for the year ended December 30th, 2021. This is what's termed the statement of net position. This is a accrual-based financial statement. It's a balance sheet, and it includes all city investments, not just the general fund, not just special revenue funds. Everything that the city has is reported on this balance sheet. What you'll notice is, on this balance sheet, there's no debt. The city does not have debt. It's the investment in capital assets or the infrastructure is 100% funded. And so the bottom highlight on this, might be a little bit difficult to see for those in the back, but that's termed net investment in capital assets, and it's a component of equity. And so that amount was $187 million, and it was 100% funded. There's no debt related to that amount. One key measurement typically on a balance sheet would be available cash versus outstanding debt. Again, since the city has no outstanding debt, that measurement is not applicable. But if we benchmark ourselves against other neighboring cities, we can see that we don't have one, they do. Okay. Next, next statement is, this is the income statement. Again, this is a citywide, it includes all funds. It's an accrual-based statement, but it does allow us to see a one-year measurement of some of the results of the economic investment. I've highlighted two here, property taxes and sales taxes. And a lot of the infrastructure decisions that you've made over the course of time, as those infrastructure projects are completed, eventually, they will turn into increases in things like property tax and, and sales tax. I did want to highlight those. At this point in time, for that one-year period, property taxes were a little over $13 million, and sales taxes were a little over $4 million. All right, so if we were to look at that over, a lot of what we do with the snapshot is, that looks good, but we don't know if it's good or bad until we use trend analysis. So since 2014, I've highlighted some of those balances for you. You can see, all the way up in 2021, the cash balance was $51 million. Back in 2014, the cash balance was $58 million. So it's remained relatively intact over the course of time. That net investment in capital assets of $187 million back in 2014 was $150 million. Couple of things to note, not only the increase of that balance, but annually, there's a depreciation charge against that balance of about $7 million that's netted against these numbers. And when the city makes an investment in assets like the Wilson Three Basin, where it won't be a city-owned asset, those costs do not get capitalized in this number. Those are excluded. So all of those costs are excluded from these balances. So you can see the change over time. The capital growth was 24%, including the $7 million annual depreciation charge and those significant projects that the city does not own. You can also use trend analysis with, with the revenues. You can see the sales tax revenues increased over that time by 61% and property tax revenues increased over that time by 37%. The idea there is that the decisions made as projects are completed will impact these types of revenue streams and new revenue streams. As an example, as all of the basins and the floodplain, the flood map was rezoned for that Dunlap area with all of the infrastructure that had gone on in the city over a long course of time. As, as that rezoning occurred, the property values in that Dunlap area were increased, which translates into increased property tax revenues for the city. It also rezones areas that allow for economic It also rezones areas that allow for economic development, allows businesses to come into the city, things like the AMPM down by the freeway, and those generate significant sales tax for the city. It also creates new revenue streams, same area, there's a hotel going in. TOT taxes has not been a significant source of revenue for the city. With hotels coming into town, there's new revenue streams that are going to be paying, or new hotels that will be paying TOT and create a new revenue stream specifically for the general fund. This page is just a highlight, just a summary page of some of those key ratios for the citywide consideration. Again, we don't have a cash-to-debt ratio since we have no debt. Our infrastructure is 100% funded. Our capital growth over that course of time was 24%. Sales tax was 61%, and property tax was 37%. I don't have the other surrounding cities listed on here, but I will let you know that if we benchmark ourselves against them, we benchmark very well against those surrounding cities. Okay, using the same financial information, but diving into the general fund, which is just one slice of the city's fiscal picture, but it's the primary operating fund of the city, the general fund. So previously, we looked at citywide, everything. Now, this is same year, but specifically for general fund only. Couple of things to highlight, in very small font, the highlight at the top is cash and investments in the general fund of about $32 million. And then the highlight at the bottom, under fund balance, the equity component of the general fund is termed fund balance. There's five classifications of fund balance, and the bottom one that's highlighted is unassigned fund balance with a balance at this point in time of about $9 million. The key with the unassigned fund balance is that that would be the spot to look for the balance available for future funding decisions. So while we look at $54 million in our investment portfolio, the general fund was reflecting $9 million of unassigned fund balance, un earmarked fund balance for future spending All right, the second page is an income statement, same period of time for the general fund. The one thing that I did want to highlight on this page was total expenditures in the general fund. So for this year, it was $24 billion. What I like to use that number for as it relates to this is considering available cash versus annual expenditures, and that tells us, in the event of a fiscal crisis, how long could we keep our doors open? How long could we operate? And so at this point, we had $32 million of cash, I believe, $24 million of annual expenditures, so we could operate for roughly a year and a half, 1.4 years, without another dime coming in to the city coffers. Next slide is that analysis as a trend analysis going back. So you can see way back in 2013, we were over two years, and up to 1.4 in 2021. I did include 2022 for this. Our financial statement audit has not been completed yet for '22, so this is the only slide with the '22 information in there. Couple other things to note on this slide is, at the very bottom, the general fund revenues, all revenues, not just property tax, sales tax, but all revenues for this period have increased 81% from where they were, and that's a result of all of the infrastructure around the city producing a return on that economic investment. Again, just a summary of what that key ratio was, 1.4 for us, and I can tell you, from a benchmarking standpoint, nobody can touch us around our surrounding cities, and within the state, we're at the very top end. It's an extraordinary number to have available. 1.4 times general fund annual expenditures in cash is remarkable. Okay, finally, just to give you some examples of the types of projects that have been funded with all city money, and again, all of these are with available cash. The city has historically saved, and then paid for these projects without external debt financing these projects. In order to fill the gap between, some of these projects are very, very expensive projects. We have some upcoming that are very expensive projects. The city's done a good job of identifying public partnerships, as well as available grant funds to fund projects as they are determined to move ahead. This page just kind of summarizes what we talked through. Again, as far as moving forward to the November 2022 balances, the city has a citywide investment portfolio valued at 54, a little over $54 million. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council or staff?
Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you.
Great presentation. This is a receiving file, so thank you for the report, sir. Moving on to item number five. Presenter is Landon Kern for the acceptance of work, Wilson Three Basin Project Phase 1B improvements. Mr. Kern.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This report before you is for the acceptance of contract work associated with our Wilson Three Basin Phase 1B improvements project. I'll start off with a little citywide background on other drainage projects that have been completed within the city, as those have been designed and constructed. The Wilson Three Basin Project represents another example and of important project that results in critical flood protection, not only in the vicinity of the project area, but as well as downstream along, in this case, the Wilson Creek Corridor, well beyond the project limits. Starting off here with a few pictures that have been shown before of our devastating 1969 flooding down in the Dunlap area, which is right along the Wilson Creek Corridor, closer to the I-10, between Yucipa Boulevard and I-10. And some more photos of that flooding that occurred in that area at that time. Here is an illustration of the FEMA designated flood zones in this part of town. This is a map from 2008 showing the flood zones at that time. The darker blue shaded area there on the center of the exhibit before you shows that designated floodway, and those red dots reflect locations along that corridor that had previously been in the floodplain, several future developments that are moving forward, one of which is the Gateway Development here, closer to the freeway with that hotel going in, Dunlap Park, and a couple other development projects here along that corridor that were previously in the floodplain. Subsequently, the floodplain mapping revisions associated as a result of several, quite a few drainage projects within town resulted in a revised map before you hear, showing that reduced floodway and opening up those areas for development along that corridor. Finally, this map here shows the resulting properties that were removed from the flood zones in this area as a result of that map change. This is effective in 2014. Next, we see the current FEMA flood mapping in this area. You'll see kind of a breakout condition of the floodway, which is right near I-10 in that area of the Gateway Development, where our current Dunlap Bridge removal project is taking place. And what we anticipate to be one more revision upcoming with our efforts with that bridge project that's underway, as well as the LOMER that is moving forward, that will further reduce the floodway in this area to be reduced within the channel. And so with the construction of these upstream projects, as well as the Dunlap Bridge project here just mentioned, including the Wilson Three Basin or Pendleton Low Water Crossing project, we believe that these FEMA-designated flood zones are anticipated to be reduced further and potentially limited to the Wilson Creek Channel, subject to final engineering and those LOMER studies. And that also includes the lighter blue area that's shown in some of these areas on the screen, that is the 100-year floodplain as well. Other project benefits for the Wilson Three Basin Project include water quality with the design of the lake feature and the groundwater recharge that's taking place, as well as passive recreation. These combined benefits here that you can see in this overall site plan of the Oakland Creek specific plan represent enhancements to the quality of life with improved vehicular emergency access network of our trails in the area and in the region connecting through this project, park amenities, and overall enhanced public safety. This area here, you'll see in the center part of the screen is our Wilson Three Basin that realigned Wilson Creek that had previously conveyed stormwater through this now woodside development project with 144 homes going in there. Also included in this specific plan are these innovation pads, one of which is being developed for the city yard that's being relocated and constructed now. I'll speak a little bit more about this future innovation pad off of Bryant Street, and ultimately the channel and the future residential track in Phase 2 for the area west of Second Street. And now I'll give a brief introduction as we have moved forward with the construction, and as a phased approach, we have completed the Phase 1A improvements. Those were accepted by council after completion in September of 2021, and that work was completed by James McMinn, JMI, including the masquerading effort for the basin, the realignment of the Wilson Creek Channel, material delivery to the woodside development to facilitate that economic development there, as well as the other areas within the specific plan area, incorporating material delivery to these pads here for future development activity, as well as generation of rock with the excavation. We were able to uncover and sort and use much of that rock in the next phase of improvements, which is Phase 1B, associated with this report tonight, that is being recommended for acceptance of the contract work. This work was awarded to LB3 in September of 2021, and it includes primarily the channel protection of Wilson Creek between Oakland Road and as it drops into the larger basin area here, primarily being the riprap lining, that channel protection along that corridor there, and also includes drainage improvements along the church site, some drainage and some fencing and gates associated with access for maintenance to this portion of the project Next, we have the Phase 1C improvements, which were awarded in August of last year, and those are under construction now. They include primarily the work associated with the Oakland Creek conveyance. That creek enters this area and converges with Wilson Creek right at the entrance to the main basin here, and so significant effort with the Phase 1C improvements is for the construction of that impact basin, the box culvert and that transition, along with the channel protection that goes down into the main basin area, as well as additional trail fencing and some erosion control measures throughout the site, primarily for dust Let me back up one second here. In the Phase 1C improvements, one thing to note is the structure here at Oakland Road that is part of the overall project was removed from Phase 1C via change order, and staff is looking at that for potential opportunities for value engineering to reduce the costs, and we anticipate working that into an upcoming phase of construction. And finally, here shows just that there are some remaining phases that we're calling future phases, that primarily involves completing the larger basin area, as I just mentioned, incorporating a value-engineered structure at Oakland Road, and ultimately, the channel downstream of Second Street and this recharge area, as well as the basin lake and landscaping, and several other components tying all the overall project together. Here, before you, I included some photographs of progress during construction. This is a photograph taken immediately after the Phase 1A, that masquerading effort. And moving forward in March of last year, here's a drone photograph showing some of that channel protection going in, which is now completed down around the bend to where we're working now in our Phase 2, or I'm sorry, Phase 1C area. And then finally, I have a few photographs here taken after some recent storm activity. You can see the channel lining is in, and we have received a significant amount of debris and mud and silt from the burn area from El Dorado Fire and Oakland, the Apple Fire, accumulated in the channel here. Here's an aerial photograph showing a significant amount of stormwater and debris that was contained fully within the Wilson Three Basin area. And then one more shot here, looking west after a storm, showing the capacity of the basin here, and we're seeing the significant capacity of that basin in work through construction. And one thing that happened late last year, we were able to secure some grant funding through the CALOE SCDAA program, and we have been actively removing that debris from the basin, and anticipate moving forward with that reimbursement process. That's a 75% grant that we received to get that material to other locations to restore that capacity, and also, of course, it was great to see that in action, keep that material from getting down into that Dunlap area that we just looked at with that historic flooding in that area. So back to the funding for the overall project is highlighted in your reports and also shown here on the screen before you. As you can see, no general funds are allocated to this project. There are significant amount of partnerships represented here on our funding sources with local and regional agencies. Those partnerships have helped facilitate that, these phases of construction, these multiple state and federal grants, ARPA funding, and I think this is a demonstration of the project's eligibility for grant programs, and staff will continue to pursue grant funding for future phases of construction. Next, we have our approved budget for the Phase 1B construction. You'll see on the middle column there, the approved budget at the time of award, and then the actual cost summarized here in this final column, under the overall project budget, and that remaining balance to be used for future phases of construction. Did want to highlight one unique aspect of this phase of construction incorporated, council-approved change order number six, which was specific for additional excavation, where we were able to uncover a significant amount of additional rock that was used to finish the channel protection for this phase. Finally, here, with respect to potential additional funding sources for these future phases of construction, we have the land value of the surplus property. The pad closest to Bryant Street, the proposed IRCD development, represents what we are estimating based on an appraisal from a few years back at 1.3, just over $1.3 million. Similarly, we have an appraisal for the land value associated with the future residential track west of Second Street that was appraised at that time for just over $1 million. The Western Heights Water Company has expressed interest for a potential financial contribution based on the recharge that we expect for the recharge area that is to be constructed west of Second Street. And then finally, in that same area for that recharge component for that future phase, another potential Valley District funding agreement for those recharge areas. And as mentioned previously, with the other grant monies that we have for this project, we will continue to pursue other grant opportunities to fund the future phases of construction. And with that, staff recommends approval of items 1 through 3 of this report to accept the contract work and file that notice of completion, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Landon. Any questions of staff?
I don't have a question, but a comment. I can't go back to 1969's flood event, but I wasn't around then. But I do know that I had seen some incidents take place in the city prior to those enhancements to the channels and the basins being put in. So thanks to Ray and staff, and this vision of bringing these forward is definitely an asset and an improvement to our community. So with that, I make a motion to approve number 5, 1 through 3.
I'll second that.
Does this mean the project's over, or it's done, they completed?
Phase 1B, so primarily the channel protection elements and the Phase One B, so primarily the channel protection elements and the fencing and drainage improvements have been completed and inspected.
How many more phases?
Phase One C is underway. We are working on Phase One D to incorporate the remaining phases associated with the box at Oakland Road and some other components, hopefully near Second Street. We do anticipate a couple other phases after Phase One D is completed, especially considering the area of west of Second Street with that potential residential development there.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, fiscal year 2022-23 Community Activity Grant Request. Megan Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Earlier this evening, I believe in item number four, the Finance Director Philip talked about sales tax and the positive things that come from that. Special events bring people to the community, which in turn can increase sales tax. The item before you this evening is the Redlands Bike Classic, and they have submitted a special event permit application to host the Ucaipa Circuit on Thursday, April 13th, 2023. The men's race will take place at 10:00 AM and the women's race will take place at 11:15. The event itself will begin at 6:00 AM, was set up, and will wrap up by 4:00 PM up in Oakland. In addition to the special event permit, they submitted a community activity grant application, which included a request for services from the Ucaipa Police Department, which includes officers along the Redlands Bike Classic Race course, and they asked that these officers be strategically positioned at road closures and rolling closures and assist with traffic control. The in-kind amount of their request is $7,000, and this will be charged against the city police department overtime budget. They requested the Ucaipa Fire Department, the Fire Department will be an M, part of the medical response team if a racer were to be injured, and the race medical team would provide aid, and the race medical team consists of local physicians. However, Ucaipa Fire would provide support as needed, but will not have a dedicated engine assigned to the event. The in-kind amount requested for fire services is $250. Community Development Department, they are requesting the Community Development Department to review the traffic control plan for parking lot closures, turning identified signals to flashing and providing traffic control cones and barriers at identified locations. Public Works Personnel would work their normal shift, however, their duties would be reassigned for the day to aid the Ucaipa Circuit race. The amount of $400 is estimated to cover the encroachment permit for the event. In addition, they are asking for the special event permit fee to be waived in the amount of $200. They are asking that the city promote the event on their website, electronic message boards, social media, and that they can use the city logo to promote the city at the race start and finish, as well as in Redlands where the race will go the next day. Staff will continue to meet with the applicant to ensure that the 2023 event is a success, and the Redlands Bike Classic personnel have met with city staff as well as City Council previously to address the concerns from the 2022 race, which included a lack of advertising for the city and a lack of volunteers, which brought forth a few safety concerns. The fiscal year 2223 Community Activity Grant Fund for in-kind requests has a balance of $9,042.88. If council improves the in-kind request from the Redlands Bike Classic for fiscal year 2223, the balance left in the Community Activity Fund would be $1,192.88. Staff is requesting and recommending, I'm sorry, that City Council approve items one through six as listed in the staff report, and there is a member of the Redlands Bike Classic, Mark Shaw, here this evening, should City Council have any questions about the Redlands Bike Classic Ucaipa Circuit race. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Megan. Is there any questions of staff?
How many years have we done this? This is like, what, the fifth or sixth year that we've had the Bike Classic up here?
I'm going to look over at Mark. I don't know the exact number. I do know in 2020, we did not have a race because of COVID, or in 21?
Yeah, about six or seven. It's a fantastic event. I move approval.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Venable. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Megan. Item number seven, California State Library Building Forward. This is going to be by Mr. Shane Masood.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before you tonight, our two recommendations regarding the California State Library Building Forward Infrastructure Program. The first recommendation is that City Council review and reauthorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the California State Library. The second recommendation is that City Council review and provide direction regarding the draft joint use agreement between the City of Ucaipa, the County of San Bernardino, Ucaipa-Calamisa Joint Unified School District for the proposed library facility. I'd like to start with a little bit of history on this grant program. The California State Library promotes the development and growth of public libraries throughout the state by providing funding, equal access to resources, and ongoing technical assistance. The State Budget Act of 2021 allocated $439 million in one-time funds to the California State Library for this program. This program is to address critical life safety and critical maintenance needs of public library facilities throughout California. The maximum grant award amount is $10 million per application. Grantees will be provided, will need to provide matching funds on a dollar-for-dollar basis. Matched contributions must be a cash match, either from the applicant's organization or funds from a third-party source. Matching funds can only be spent on eligible project cost. I'd like to discuss with you some of the items as it relates to the current Ucaipa Branch Library. So the current Ucaipa Branch Library was built in 1969 and expanded to its current size of 11,698 square feet in 1987. While there have been modest improvements to the facility over the years, it stands much as it was originally constructed 50 years ago. During the 1990s, the library facility was the busiest in the county. As it stands today, it's about the fifth busiest library within the county system. For example, in fiscal year 2018-2019, the branch circulated approximately 280, excuse me, 218,000 items with over 4,400 active users. Last year, even with the occasional door site service due to COVID-19, the branch circulated approximately 112,000 items. Library has several active programs and hosts an average of 264 programs a year. One of the largest programs is the summer reading program, which has an average of 1,600 participants, which has averaged 1,600 participants the last five years leading up to the COVID-19 pandemic. The program was reinstated, and with that reinstatement, the first program attendance had over 740 participants. Library currently has 18 public accessible computers, some of which were initially purchased through grant funding that the city had obtained. Some of those computers are also devoted to early learning. Unfortunately, there are no computer labs for group instruction or individual study rooms. The children's area within the library is small, what, excuse me, the children's area is small with little room for activities and no comfortable lounge area for parents who interact with their children. There is a small but active teen group at the library, but limited spaces available for individual or group study. There is also an active literacy program supported in part by the city. However, there are no quiet areas or individual rooms that allow for tutors to serve the educational needs of the residents in our community. In 2019, the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools published a countywide educational report that highlighted the importance of early childhood education, stating that research shows that children who are not proficient readers by the end of the third grade are four times more likely to leave school without a diploma than proficient readers, and more likely to engage in criminal activities impacting public safety. County of San Bernardino's Library Master Facility Plan, which was published in 2001, addressed the inadequacies in the existing library facility by recommending that a new library be built. A 25,000-square-foot facility was advised based on a projected 20-year population growth of approximately 60,000 people by the year 2021. In 2010, the city initiated a library needs assessment study, which based the size of the facility on a projected 2030 population growth, which resulted in similar findings as the county's master facility plan. The analysis in these studies indicated that the gross library size of approximately 25,000 to 30,000 square feet would adequately meet the needs of the city at build-out. If you turn your attention to the screen, oh, thank you. Since the study, a joint library serving the needs of the city, the school district and the county, including a teen café center, has evolved, known as the Ucaipa Branch Library Project. This new 25,000-square-foot library will incorporate new educational technologies, energy-efficient standards, solar energy, and meet all current building requirements, including green technologies and ADA standards. If you look at the screen, the proposed facility will be located in the Dunlap area of Ucaipa. This is a 4.4-acre school district-owned site adjacent and just east of Ucaipa, just east of the Ucaipa High School campus. Unfortunately, neither in-kind contributions nor land value are considered as an eligible match for this grant opportunity. A new library facility will not only be a facility that is an accessible safe space, but will also be a centerpiece for the community that will enhance and enrich the quality of life and educational opportunities for the residents of Ucaipa and the surrounding communities. The library is just not another public facility, it's a multi-generational resource that provides everyone, regardless of circumstances, an opportunity to better one's life. March 28th, 2022, City Council confirmed the submission of an application and approved resolution 2022-11 for the Ucaipa Branch Library Project. The application requested grant funding for the planning, design, and construction phase of the new library in the amount of $9 million. The total estimated planning, design, and construction costs are anticipated to be $18 million. The Library Ad-Hoc Committee, which was discussed previously at council meeting and our partners, will decide what elements will be included in the design of this project. Resolution number 2022-11 authorized and directed the city manager or his designee to prepare and file an application for funding with the California State Library and take such actions necessary or appropriate to attain grant funding. Additionally, resolution 2022-11 authorized the city manager or designee to execute the funding agreement with the California State Library and amend thereto as well submit any required documents, funding requests, or reports required to obtain grant funding. On October 18th, 2022, the city was notified by the California State Library that the Ucaipa Branch Library Project was awarded $9 million in state grant funding for the new library facility, as well as provided further details regarding the grant agreement. As part of the award process, City Council authorized the city manager to submit any required documents necessary to obtain the grant funding. Some of those documents included a final budget, an implementation plan, a resolution. Upon approval of these documents, the city will be issued 4.5 million in state funding. The second payment of 3.6 million in state funding will be received once the city submits and receives approval of a January 31st, 2024 report. The final payment of $900,000 will be made available upon submission and approval of the final interim report. All state grant funding and local match funding must be spent at the same rate. However, there are specific terms that City Council should be aware of in the grant agreement with the state. For example, any changes to the proposed library facility and project would have to be approved by the state. Change is defined as any information that may impact the original information presented in the grant application. Additionally, the agreement includes a non-appropriation clause, meaning it is possible that the full amount of funding will not be available. Also, the agreement specifies that the state can terminate the grant funding on a 30-day notice. Another specific term is the agreement, in the agreement is that the state librarian is listed as the final decision-maker regarding a dispute. City staff will work with the California State Librarian to see if the state would be willing to make any amendments to this grant agreement. In addition to the grant agreement, city staff in coordination with the county and school district have been working on a joint use agreement for the proposed library project. Over the past several weeks, city staff has met with county and with the county and school district to discuss the terms of this agreement and have incorporated them for their feedback. As part of these discussions, the county has tentatively committed to contributing $3 million towards this project, $2 million of which would be used towards the local match, $1 million towards library materials and equipment. In addition to the land, which is anticipated to be worth millions of dollars, the school district has been requested to commit its redevelopment agency, RDA, pass-through funds for fiscal year '25-'26 through fiscal year '31-'32, the end of the RDA for the new library project. This amount would be in the form of reimbursement to the city in the amount up to $2 million. There are several alternative sources of funding potentially available to accommodate the local match for this proposed project, including development impact fees, pass-through redevelopment agency fund, county funding, school district funding partnerships, additional grants, surplus property sales. Like many other projects completed over time, the library project could start with limited DIF, public facility funds passed through RDA funding, and general fund contributions, while staff continues to pursue other sources of funding. In addition, the city's total fund balance, including unassigned fund balance, emergency contingency, economic stabilization, and fire protection, is approximately $27.5 million. Excluding the fire protection, the total fund balance is approximately $18.2 million. City staff is actively pursuing additional local and federal grant funding opportunities for this project. Just as past October, city staff submitted a $1 million grant with the National Endowment for the Humanities. In your agenda packet tonight, as well as on the screen, there is a proposed local match funding table that highlights the various potential funding sources for the required $9 million local match. As approved by council on November 14th of 2022, there was an allocation of $1 million towards this project. There is proposed EIFD, property sales, cities pass-through RDA, DIF, and other grants at anticipated $4 million. County funding at $2 million, school district pass-through RDA at $2 million, totaling $9 million to meet that local match. In conclusion, given the more detailed conditions of the grant now available, city staff is recommending that City Council receive these conditions and reauthorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the state for the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant Program. Additionally, and that City Council would provide direction regarding the draft joint use agreement between the City of Ucaipa, the County of San Bernardino, and the Ucaipa-Calamisa Joint Unified School District. Also, I'd like to highlight if council wishes, staff can return to council at a later date with the resolution that was previously adopted. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Shane. Questions of?
So, proposed EIFD, have we applied or have we submitted an EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District? Have we done that?
Staff has, I'm sorry, City Council has taken the first Staff has, I'm sorry, City Council has taken the first step in that formation process. We have had, as councils are aware, a number of conversations with the county about participating in that EIFD. The second step in that process, I believe, will be in front of council in the next 30 days, 45 days if you want to.
Yeah, so the EIFD process is moving forward, the next step is going to be the appointment of the public member and then the confirmation of the boundaries for the EIFD that will fund it, and then the scheduled public hearing date for the first meeting of the EIFD has already been established as well. So yes, that process and mechanism is moving forward to facilitate the potential funding for it, and then the Cosmont staff is currently working on the public financing plan and those related documents that would be necessary for the adoption of the EIFD for City Council approval at a later date.
How much time do we have to match the funds for the $9 million?
The, you want to take it? Good questions. So we have till March 31 of 2026 to expend all funds. As noted, we will get a first installment of 4.5 million. We need to spend that funding at the same rate of our own funding, so if we spend a million, we need to spend a million of their funding. It does not have to be spent by that January 31, 2024 date, that 4.5, but that is how they've set up the guidelines within this grant.
Now, are there still RDA funds available? I thought they discontinued RDA funds.
The pass-through agreements that we had at the City of Ucaipa has with the school district, community college district, and other entities, the county, has survived the RDA dissolution that occurred back in 2010. And so those amounts continue to accumulate on an annual basis, and they will increase, they have increased historically, they will continue to increase as development occurs in those areas. And so the former RDA areas, which include the freeway corridor specific plan or a big chunk of that, the Oakland Road Corridor, some of that, the College Village area down to Ucaipa Boulevard and the freeway, all of those areas, the uptown, all of those areas are in the former RDA. So as those property taxes increase in those areas, a portion of that is passed through to those other entities now. It used to be held by the city, now it's held by the school district for that agreement, community college district for their agreement, county for their agreement, but they still are obligated through those original pass-through agreements to cooperate with the city, depending on which entity it is, in the use of those funds. And with the school district, we made an agreement shortly after the dissolution with the, for RDA funding, such that we would maintain the existing requirements of the agreement, the existing conditions of the agreement, which were that both the district, the children in the district and the district would benefit, and the community at large would benefit from any investment. But what we changed was the school district has full control, with the concurrence of the city, of how they use that funding on their side, their half. The city has full control of how it uses the funding on its half, as long as it meets that eligibility requirement, which is that it benefits both the district and the community. And so a library like this, we believe, would be a very good candidate for use of the pass-through RDA funding. We have funding available starting now, the city has funding available starting now for a match for the library if the city council so chooses. The school district has allocated their funds through 2026, I believe, for other projects. But what we're asking the school district, what the city is asking the school district, is to make their pass-through RDA funds available from 2026 to the end of the pass-through period, RDA period, which is 2032.
So I noticed that the location has changed, and the elevation that we saw was the old Chapman Event Center, is that what that was?
No, that was actually the first concept that was done years and years ago, and you're right, it was at a different location. What has kind of evolved the location, at least the potential location, to the old Sizzler site is, number one, the interest in doing a joint project with the school district, if the council wishes to continue to pursue that. But part of that is the teen center, the teen café, which was prioritized by the community through the Needs Facility Assessment years ago. If you remember, there was the police station, the fire station, the Y-PAC ended up being the next set of priorities, which was the performing arts and the other arts, and then a large meeting room area. And then following that, in the priorities established by the city council based on that community input, was the additional senior programming areas and teen, I'm sorry, teen programming areas, both of those. And so this project, if it ends up at that location and the current vision, if you will, it would be a very good location for a teen café, teen center. We've learned kind of the hard way that having the teen center, the teen café, too far away from the actual students where they're going to school doesn't work very well, and it also may open up the opportunity for the existing library, which is also owned by the city through that agreement that we structured with the county years ago, for that senior programming, which was the next thing on the list. I'm sorry, that was a long answer to a short question.
So the cost of that land, their contribution, that's going to be applied to the grant?
That's another great question, and Shane knows the answer to this one.
If I may, just go back real quick to Ray's previous point as well. We also are proposing this site because within the grant guidelines, this program prioritizes projects within areas of high poverty. And according to state standards, this region within the community, this Dunlap Acres neighborhood, has met those disadvantaged community standards. And so to try to make sure our project scored high enough within their scoring rubric, we place the, we're proposing to have the project here. We tried during the draft comment period for the grant applications to have the state librarian consider land value as part of the matching component. However, that consideration was not implemented in the final grant guidelines.
Is that considered Dunlap? I've never considered that side of the Ucaipa Boulevard Dunlap.
It's just adjacent to it, sir, so close enough to where we believe, like I said, it would help in the competitive grant process.
And once it's built, who's going to staff it or who's going to manage it?
The draft agreement and all of our conversations over the years has included the county operating the library as they do now in the existing building. The teen café might be a joint effort in terms of operation and maintenance, but the library itself has always been discussed as the county's, part of the county's role.
Any other questions of staff?
I'll move approval.
One second.
So we have a first and a second. Part of the report is to, for seeking of direction as it relates to further grant funding, is that correct?
Mary, if you'd like, I could read the recommendations again?
Please.
The first recommendation is that City Council review and reauthorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the California State Library. And the second recommendation for tonight is that City Council review and provide direction regarding the draft joint use agreement between the City of Ucaipa, the County of San Bernardino, and the Ucaipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District.
And Shane, with that, the table that was on the screen a moment ago regarding with the numbers, is that the table you're speaking of for us to approve or provide feedback on?
So with the joint use agreement, it would be any of the items within that in terms of roles and responsibilities, if there's any recommendation or direction that council would like to provide with regards to that joint use?
And if I may, just to be clear, although we have continued to interact with the school district staff, county staff relative to elements in the agreement, they haven't had the opportunity to review the final document, the final draft document. As always, somebody has to go first, and so when you have partnerships like this, our request is that council give us any substantive direction in the agreement itself, recognizing that we're lucky, we're likely, I'm sorry, we're likely to come back to you with an updated agreement. So this wouldn't be a final approval, this would just be seeking direction on that element. And of course, the first element is just ensuring that with the new grant, with the new grant conditions, that we're not fully detailed with the application process, now that you have those, that we continue to go forward with this grant agreement with the state.
My motion included one, for sure, to go ahead and reauthorize.
So, as it relates to the local match proposed funding, I think you're on the right track. I think staff is doing the right things as it relates to speaking to county and the school board, or the school district, rather. I think the councils have passed, are on the right track, making this a joint use facility involving the teen café. I think there were early on discussions of maybe even a senior center at that location as well, but I think appropriately so, that was dismissed, and we're moving just towards this library. And maybe in phases with future uses for expansion, and maybe the teen café coming in later phases. From my chair, my direction is that you continue down the path you're on, seeking input from the county and from the school district. This is one of those builds that is going to benefit the students of our community, and certainly as it moves forward. The teen center that used to be housed right there on Seventh Street was used when a school was nearby, the ninth grade campus or the junior high school, as it were. And certainly, we can find it again, a teen center that's being occupied if we can get there. So my direction from my chair is that you continue down the road you're on and dialogue with both the county and the school district to secure these fundings as proposed on the screen. And if anybody else has any further direction or anything else, then we can move forward with the original motion and second, if it includes both.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Shane. At this time, we'll move on to item number eight with Ms. Megan Wolf for the 2022 Winter Fest wrap-up.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. The Ninth Annual Winter Fest was held on Saturday, November 26, from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the historic uptown. The event was planned and organized by a planning committee, which included the Chamber of Commerce, who was in charge of the food and merchandise vendors, and the Knights of Columbus, who was in charge of the Beer Garden, as well as the Ucaipa News Mirror, who provided advertisement in the weekly news mirror. The city took on the role of booking live entertainment and booking jumpers for the Kids Zone. In addition, city staff turned the inside of the Performing Arts Center into Santa's Workshop. You were able to write a letter to Santa, you visited Mrs. Claus in her kitchen and got a warm chocolate chip cookie, and if that wasn't good enough, we also gave you cotton candy and hot chocolate. And then you ended by seeing Mr. Claus himself. Santa was there for photos, and the families and children that went into the workshop thoroughly enjoyed the experience. In addition, Winter Fest was the first day that the ice rink was open, and every session was sold out. However, I would like to note that the revenue earned from the ice rink was allocated to the ice rink and will be brought before a city council at the next council meeting. If visiting Santa's Workshop, jumping on the jumpers, eating food, listening to live entertainment wasn't enough, we also had a snow hill, and the best part about the snow hill is see. Kids and parents raced down that hill together. At 6:00 p.m., there was the tree lighting ceremony. Santa got to ride in a fire truck that was led by the police department, and they rode down the Boulevard, around the roundabout, walked over to the Ucaipa Performing Arts Center stage, where as a community, we sang "Santa Claus Is Coming To Town," and then we counted down, and the beautiful tree, as well as the roundabout tree, was lit. In addition, staff marketed the event through advertisements in the Your Ucaipa Activity Guide. We posted the information on the Facebook, Instagram, and the city website. We used a street banner across Ucaipa Boulevard, and we placed press releases and advertisements in local newspapers. Positive feedback was received about the event from both event-goers. Food and merchandise vendors stated the event exceeded their expectations, and business owners stated this was the best festival to date. Their revenues earned on that day surpassed their expectations, and they wanted to make sure that they thanked the city council for allowing this event to take place. Events like this bring and help create a sense of community. Winter Fest provides families and friends an opportunity to come together during the holiday season to make memories that will last a lifetime. I have to say, my favorite part of the event is when Santa lights the tree and then it begins to magically snow in the uptown park. The city council approved an itemized budget for the 2022 Winter Fest on October 24 with revenues in the amount of $7,800. Revenues totaled, actual revenues totaled 19,126, which was an increase of $11,326. Expenditures were approved in the amount of $39,525, and actual revenues were $39,653.51. So the original approved net expense was $31,725. Actual net expense was $20,526.57, which equals a positive variance in the amount of $11,198.43. If I may, I'd like to ask for your attention to the screen now, where we can reminisce a little bit about the event. This is inside Santa's Workshop. The video you're seeing right now is where we did our letters to Santa, and this is the train ride, the ice rink, the snow hill. And I was told that, I'm sorry, these are the merchandise and food vendors and the tree lighting ceremony. This was Active Church, who led the song leading up to Santa's arrival, and I was told that the children that attended the workshop actually received a letter back from Santa, which was very exciting. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Outstanding report, thank you. Any questions of staff?
So the Santa letters and Mrs. Claus, was that, is this the first time we did that, or is that right? And who said it was the best event ever? Was that over the Music and Arts Festival or just the best Winter Fest ever?
I believe they meant the best Winter Fest ever, but it was the, I'm going to forget the name, it was a vintage shop located on Ucaipa Boulevard and California Street, and they said that the revenues that they earned at this event far surpassed their expectations, and it was more money than they had earned in the past four months, so they were very thankful.
It was a fantastic event, fantastic.
Absolutely. So I actually walked out of the Santa Claus's Workshop and sought out Megan to ask her what company were we using to make our Y-PAC into the North Pole? And I was actually, embarrassed to say, I was surprised when she said, "That's all city staff, that is the Community Services Department, hard at work." I would have bet that was a company that does that all over the region, that you had that sewed down to a fine science, that I was certain that couldn't be the same folks that are responsible for all the other day-to-day activities in our community under your leadership. So phenomenal job of putting that together. I can't say enough good things about this Winter Fest this year, it was truly magical in the uptown, and our Santa Claus was also larger than life. You did a good job. So this is a receiving file. Thank you so much for that report, it was phenomenal, and we will move on to item number nine, Mr. Fermin Pressiato with the Right-Away Acquisition.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is the Right-Away Acquisition for the County Line Road Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee Grant-Funded Street Improvement Project. As you are aware, the County Line Road is a major arterial border. As you are aware, the County Line Road is a major arterial bordering both Ucaipa and Cal Mesa and it provides access to the I-10 freeway. Over the years, vehicular traffic volume on County Line, County Line Road has continuously increased. And about nine years ago, back in 2013, as a result of several traffic engineering studies that were completed and adopted by the city council, the, the city's general plan identified roundabout improvements at several intersections along both Avenue E and County Line Road. And so for, for both Avenue E and County Line Road, as council heard before, the construction of roundabouts instead of the signalized intersections allows for certain segments of arterial streets to remain two lanes instead of four at build out. If you'll recall, the previous general plan identified arterial streets to be built out to four lanes at their ultimate condition. But after these studies, it showed that certain segments could remain two lanes. That, as you're aware, would save construction costs and also right of way costs ultimately. And just as important, it would reduce impacts to private properties. The, this exhibit on the screen before you is for County Line Road. And I'll start off at the top left corner for Third Street. And as you go east to Second and then go, keep going down to California, eventually, you're eventually down on Bryant Street, which is the limits of, of one of these segments. The area in pink identifies the right of way area that would be required to, in order to construct a, to widen County Line Road to four lanes. And this next exhibit shows the, the same limits of the project, but the area in blue identifies a right of way that would be, that would be required for, for two lanes. And the roundabout, the roundabouts at the intersections. The difference is in the previous exhibit, the, the width of those pink areas or pink lines is about 14 feet. And in this scenario, it's only three feet. This next exhibit kind of overlays it too. And you can see that there's a significant difference between the right of way acquisition that would be required between, you know, that would be required to widen the streets to four lanes compared to two lanes. In 2017, city of Ucaipa and city of Cal Mesa staff initiated discussions for a joint project along County Line Road. And at, at that time, the County Line Road Corridor Project was prioritized by city council. The overall project extends about one and a half miles from Bryant Street to just east of Cal Mesa Boulevard. And it is made up of several smaller, several smaller segments. These different segments are shown in this exhibit and the different colors identify the three different segments and the three different grant funding sources that fund those segments. The area in green is the ATP project area. That project was completed about in, four years ago now, in 2018. And it included the sidewalk curb and gutter and some ADA improvements along that, along those, that stretch. The area in purple or the pink color is the LPP grant funded project. And that one is currently under construction. The city of Cal Mesa has taken the lead on the construction of that project. And they also took the lead in obtaining the grant funding for, for that project. And because of the, the various grant funding sources that benefit this project, that is a joint project between Cal Mesa and Ucaipa, over the last few years, the city council has approved two fair share cost agreements between both cities. Those agreements delineate the financial obligations of each city and the responsibilities of each, of each city for the construction of each of the three, the grant funded segments. With the investment of, into the construction of the County Line Road Corridor, there are many benefits to the community. Several of them will be realized right, right away. It's important to note that these type of infrastructure projects, they do facilitate economic development, as you heard with the item related to the Wilson Three Basin earlier. And then, just like the Wilson Three Basin project and these transportation projects, they do improve the quality of life to residents by improving public safety and improving overall emergency access in the community. The, the proposed right of way acquisition is for the MSRC funded segment in orange. This next exhibit shows those two, the, the limits of the MSRC project. As I mentioned earlier, this project is some, it's located on both sides of Fifth Street along County Line Road. On the east end, it is within the limits where County Line Road will go from four lanes to two lanes, where that transition will occur. And as you can see here, there are permanent easements from three properties that are required to construct the project. The subject of the permanent easement that's in the purchase and sale agreement before you tonight is the one that circled in red there. And it is the largest, the largest permanent easement that is required between the three for this segment of the project. The remaining two are smaller in size and staff will return to council at a future meeting with a recommendation regarding the acquisition of those two. A real estate appraiser appraisal was completed by a state licensed appraiser to determine the value of the permanent easement. An offer to purchase was sent to the property owner based on that value. And the property owner has accepted the city's offer of $10,400, $400 for that permanent easement. The proposed purchase and sale agreement before you, it does reflect that value. The fiscal table on page 413 of the agenda identifies the amount of $8,286,000 in funding that is available for this project. And with the, the total cost to date shown on that table, there is sufficient funding available for the purchase of this permanent easement. And staff is recommending city council approve the purchase and sale agreement for this permanent easement and approve recommendations one through three as listed in the agenda report for this item. And that concludes my report and staff is available for questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions of staff?
No questions, no comments.
Sure.
So the majority of this, well, I wouldn't say majority, but a good portion of this project's in my district. And so the bottom line here is that we're spending less money, we're managing the same amount of traffic and we're taking less property, right?
Yes.
For those, for those that are listening, don't want to benefit of seeing this slideshow. And I wouldn't have realized that until I got on city council, got more involved. And I know not everyone in my district's gonna be thrilled about all the, the roundabouts, but I want to make sure they heard that. But the, the fact that we're spending less money, we're getting contributions towards it and we're taking less property, that's a, that's a kind of a big thing. Loosely related to it though, I've seen and heard several comments about our other roundabouts that have been completed, that we don't have any landscaping there yet or any curb appeal. So I don't know what our ETA is on that. I know it's not directly related to this right here, but it's kind of loosely related to our roundabouts. So just so you're aware, I've brought it up a couple of times to, to Ray. And then another thing is, I know the patchwork that they're doing, it's gonna get worse before it gets better on County Line Road. But County Line Road's one of those roads that if you're on your cell phone talking to anybody that lives in Ucaipa, they know when you're driving down County Line Road, they can hear your car shake. So I've heard of some flat tires and things to some of the constituents driving down County Line Road. My wife was actually probably a victim of one of those. We can't prove where the damage came from, but that road was pretty rough lately. Seems like they've gotten a little bit better on their temporary patches. But just so you're aware, there's, it's kind of, it's kind of taking a turn for the worse, I think. It might get worse before it gets better. But there are some constituents that are a little, little frustrated with the current condition that we're experiencing.
I'll follow up on those three items. With that, I'm.
If I may, I'm sorry. The, actually, the landscaping, if you will, for those existing roundabouts is under construction. They're out there today, out there last week, this week.
Perfect.
It's, it's under construction.
Thank you.
Sorry for.
And with that, I move to approve one through three on this item.
So we have a motion for items one through three, item number nine. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think I heard Mr. or Councilman Garner first. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to number 10, Mr. Fermin Presiato again, award of construction contract, County Line Road again.
Yes, thank you. This is the, actually the award of construction contract for the MSRC grant funded segment that, that was a subject of the previous item. That proposed construction contract is for that segment. And I'll bring up this exhibit here again. It shows that the, the, the limits of this construction contract are, is the orange, which is on both sides of the proposed dual lane roundabout on Fifth Street along County Line Road. These, the improvements within this segment include the sidewalk, ADA curb ramps, bike lanes, and drainage improvements on both sides of County Line Road. For, one thing that's important to note here is that on County Line Road, this is, within this segment, is the only segment on County Line Road where there is, there are properties within city of Ucaipa on the south side of County Line Road. This is the proposed roundabout at Fifth Street. This is County Line Road and, and the city limit lane is just to the south here. So the engineering plans and construction documents were prepared for this project last year. And in November, the project was advertised for construction bids. It was publicly advertised for construction bids. The cost estimate for this project is $540,000. On December 13th, five contractors submitted five sealed bids to the city in response to this bid request. Three Peaks Corporation was the apparent low bidder with a bid of $451,691. Three Peaks has completed similar projects for the city in the past. Staff is recommending the council award a construction contract in the amount of $451,691 to Three Peaks. And again, along with the construction that's currently going on with the LPP segment, staff is, is anticipating and eager to get started on the construction of this segment. And again, as I mentioned earlier, these types of projects, they do provide many benefits to the community, including that quality of life, enhancing pedestrian access, emergency access, and, and facilitating, facilitating economic development. The, this next table shows the available funding for the overall County Line Road project. It's about $8.3 million. And as you can see, all of the funding sources on this table are grant funds, with the exception of the, the fourth one, the, the PMP, the Payment Management Program. So there's about $200,000 that are, that has been allocated from the Payment Management Program through this, to this project. And I believe about 60% of that $200,000 is general fund money. So there's a very small percentage of general fund monies that is, is, has been budgeted for this project, for the overall County Line Road project, actually. And this next table shows, the first line, the 4.5 million is what has been committed to the, the other grant funded segment that is currently under construction. And with the proposed contract of $451,691, $50,000 for contingency and $45,000 for the administration of the contract, it shows up a total proposed construction cost of $546,691, which is the recommendation before you tonight. And as you can see that the, with the approval of that, if you include that, the total estimated construction cost to date would be about 5.1 million. The difference between the, the 5.1 million and the 8.2 is the design cost and right of way acquisition cost, which make up, makes up the rest of that. So as you can see, there's sufficient funding available to accommodate staff's recommendation. And for item number 10, staff recommend city council approve recommendations one through four for this item. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Fermin. Is there any questions of staff? Do you have a motion?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll put you in it, okay.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Proton Duncan and a second by Councilman Venable. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on to item number, or item number 11, this is our public hearing. So I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Ben Matlock to present the staff report.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council members. Before is case number 21-026. It's a conditional use permit in the development agreement related to the phased development of a car wash or a, a fuel station, car wash, convenience store project, as well as a 66 room hotel project with a rooftop bar and restaurant located at 32788 Oakland Road. With applicant is SG Opal. Property itself is located kind of across the street from the intersection of Colorado Street and Oakland Road. Currently is improved with a single family residence. But it is located in the city's service commercial land use district, which does facilitate the development of commercial activities related to the service population, which would include the fuel station and hotel projects as uses permitted in that district. As part of the site design, it does include the existing parcel that is owned by SG Opal, as well as surplus land that has been dedicated or designated as surplus land previously by the city council. Now, as I mentioned, it is consisting of two separate phases. The first phase of development is the fuel station project, which does include a single fuel canopy of 66 sensors, a 9,000 square foot C store building, which would include a convenience store for the fuel station, a quick service restaurant with a drive through, as well as office space for the site owner. And then it also does include a detached express service car wash with five vacuum stalls to serve that facility. The second phase of the project itself does include a hotel. It's about 50,000 square foot structure with 66 rooms and then the rooftop restaurant, as I mentioned previously. Attached or available on the screen is the site plan showing the site. So this is the location and intersection of Oakland Road and Colorado Street, which is proposed to be improved with a lighted intersection for the access or primary access to the site. This is the fueling canopy along Oakland Road and then the convenience store building along the back and then the car wash here. And then along the western edge of the site will be the, the hotel project located here. As part of the site plan, the applicant has included the proposed phase lines for the development, showing kind of the, the limits of improvements that would occur. That way, ensuring that as the car wash is built, the flow through the site is maintained and then that way can facilitate the development of the hotel at a later date without impeding the operations of the, the first use. As part of the site design, I do want to note, this is the primary entrance at the future illuminated signal at Colorado Street. There is an additional entrance east of the site and then there are two more entrances to the west. As part of the environmental review, city staff did, through our on-call environmental contracts, did have a line of sight kind of analysis provided for these driveway locations to ensure that motorists that are entering and leaving the site would be safe doing so along those entrances. Additionally, as part of the site, if you are familiar with that, it's kind of in a hole in terms of elevation. It is lower in pad elevation than Oakland Road. And so the site does propose to raise that pad elevation so that in that way, the commercial uses are at grade with Oakland Road, which is usually a common requirement for any sort of commercial developer. And so that does propose it, this kind of shows the change of elevation from the base grade elevation and then raising it to facilitate both the hotel and then the car wash and gas station and the related uses thereof. I do want to note, as part of the project's review process, an architectural review application will be required to be approved by the city's planning commission. The applicant is still working through those final designs. However, they did want to provide a sneak peek to everyone of kind of the intended architectural design for the site. They are working through that package and will be submitting it if this project is approved for a formal review through the planning commission at a later date. And they are also working on their sign program as well for this total site. But does provide kind of a nice, eclectic, modern, kind of with a craftsman flair to the design, but then also provides kind of a unity between both users as well. So recognizing that these are two separate kind of corporate, commercial tenants, but still integrating a common theme between the design to be respectful of that site design and making sure that their site is well planned. Additionally, as part of the project, it does include the access right of way from the Oakland Road construction. Specifically, the applicant does propose to acquire land that's needed to support the project. And the city has already gone through the surplus land act designation process. And so that has completed the HCD review and is included along here. As part of the development agreement, which I'll talk to about in a following slide, the applicant would be acquiring this based on the appraised value of that site, which is listed in the development agreement. And so this slide does cover the proposed development agreement between the city and SG Opal. For council's reference, the development agreement itself is really to set kind of expectations for each party, both the city and the developer. One thing that is of note as well is recognizing some of the benefits to facilitate the development of the site, which includes the city's flood control efforts. A prior presentation from Land and Kern did show some of the properties that used to be in the floodplain that are no longer that, in that condition. And this is one of those many sites in the Dunlap acres that was in that case. As part of the development agreement, it does require a planning commission recommendation to city council. So I do want to note, the project itself would not normally require city council approval, but because of the development agreement component, the project is carried up through there following a recommendation that was provided by the planning commission. Kind of key element of this development agreement is the TOT rates, which is consistent with other hotel projects that the city has approved. Specifically, the developer responsibilities as a hotel with certain amenities as provided for guests. So it is a higher class of hotel facility for those guests. In addition to the standard 7% TOT transit occupancy tax, it does include a escalating municipal surcharge of 1% during the first year of operation, 2% in the second year, and then 3% every year thereafter. And then does include as part of the developer responsibilities an access easement to the city's additional land further east of that site. As part of the city responsibilities, we do include that the developer may be able to haul material from city projects. So if we have excess dirt, we can provide that dirt for their need to fill and raise that site pad elevation. The construction of the Colorado Street and Oakland Road intersection, which is already as part of the city's capital improvement program and is already designated in the city's development impact fee. So we are already collecting funds related to that improvement project. It's already been allocated for a future project already. And then the last part is the sale of that city's surplus land at $4.98 per square foot under a separate purchase and sale agreement. And so that total, based on the numbers that are provided on the site plan, equate to $194,967,000. Now, as part of, as part of the project review, no comments were received on the project from surrounding property owners prior to the public hearing and even during the initial review that staff conducted. One comment was received prior to the city council meeting just with SB County. Their public works department just wanted to make sure that any encroachments into the flood control channel on the north side of the, of the, of the site would require a permit through the entity. And then I do want to note as well, we received a public comment letter from Mitchell Si Law subsequently requesting notice of all hearings. Two different public comment letters have been received since that project review period, and I'll discuss those shortly. I do want to note as well, with, with support from the city's on-call environmental team, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and included a number of different technical reports to support the analysis for that project. Additionally, the project does stream out of vehicle miles traveled and traffic related impacts based on the city's traffic impact analysis guidelines. And then during that public review period for this project, no public comments were received. As I mentioned, we did receive two rather hefty comment letters from Mitchell Si Law from one prior to the city council meeting and the one that has been provided tonight that was received this morning. As part of it, as a kind of a summary, only the first 10 to 14 pages are relevant to this project. The rest of it is a air quality study for a project in Los Angeles County. But I do want to cover many of the different points that were raised just to help set the record clear on the project and the analysis that was contained thereof in the mitigated MND. So as part of the analysis, or at least the comment letter, there were two things that were consistent between both letters. One was identifying some of the local hire benefits. And that the 200 or so pages that were not relevant to this specific project itself was to show kind of the benefits of those local hire benefits. I do want to note, as part of the city's standard condition of approval, we already include provisions to solicit bids from local contractors. So the city already encourages businesses that are developing in the city to try to look locally first before going out and then certainly allows that mechanism in place as well. The second one was related to COVID protocols for their contractors. Right now, the city's approach has been that the contractors are subject to OSHA and Cal OSHA requirements. And so those would certainly pertain to any contractors working on the development of this project. And then the comment letter did identify a few other kind of points of discussion. And so I do want to just quickly cover those just to help address the record. One was a concern about air quality impacts. I do want to note that operational impacts were included in the technical analysis and in the environmental document. And all of those impacts were well below the South Coast Air Quality Management District threshold. So we weren't close to the thresholds or, you know, whereas at risk, we were quite a bit below those. They had concerns about traffic impacts. I do want to note again that the project itself is screened out of the city's traffic impact analysis requirements, which does include local serving projects such as those less than 50,000 square feet. So the 9,000 square foot C store building is below that category. And then as well as hotels that are non-resort, which would apply in this case. So those two individual components of this project both are screened out from requiring additional review. However, the ITE trip rates associated with the project were included in all relevant modeling. So noise and air quality, greenhouse gas did include what the vehicle trips were. It just didn't require its own separate traffic analysis. And then certainly, the discussion for the intersection at Colorado and Oakland Road further addressed the traffic movement. So the traffic's going to be contained through that centralized intersection that would be in place to serve that site. And then again, for greenhouse gas, they had concerns that because a traffic study wasn't done, how would we know the greenhouse gas impacts? But we did include those ITE trip rates for the modeling. And then also, as part of the energy, the hotel itself would reduce travel for guests. So right now, we don't have a lot of hotels in the city. So if you're looking for a place to stay with your family, let's say during the Christmas holiday, they were most likely staying in Redlands or Beaumont or another city further away. So they're driving back and forth, you know, at least 20 miles to visit family during the holidays. And so this will help alleviate those issues. Then again, they also identified some concerns about general plan consistency. However, this is a service oriented commercial center within the city's service commercial land use district. And then finally, they requested that recirculation of the environmental document be conducted. However, new, new information was provided. And then as part of the public comment period, we did receive a notice today, which has been distributed on the public counter as well as for city council members. Like the prior comments, it has a lot of the same points. However, they did include a few additional notes, and so I do want to address those as well. One is they did make a claim that EIR is required. I do want to note, no substantial evidence in the record provides for that reasonable argument for an EIR. All of the impacts were less insignificant and very much so. And the project itself is small in scale. Like other projects that have been approved by the city, those were done by an MND, including larger ones such as the Yucapá Point Project, which is several times magnitude of a larger scale endeavor than, than this one. I do also want to just kind of apply, we had our technical analysis provided by our on-call environmental consultants, but I also have a background in environmental planning and have worked on large and small scale projects in both residential, commercial, energy, transportation, rail sectors and projects from, you know, $20,000 to multi-billion dollar projects. And I know a project that requires an EIR, and this is certainly not one. Additionally, they did identify that if EIR is not done, that recirculation should still be made. However, no new information is provided that would require a recirculation of the MND. They did identify the air quality impacts again, but that was addressed in the prior points. They had some concerns about bio-related impacts, so making a claim that there is biological resources on site. However, the site conditions were addressed in the environmental document. There's no native vegetation on site and it is just annually for weed abatement purposes. So every year, they're removing and clearing weeds that grow on that site for that purposes. And then they also identified some concerns with hazards related to the fuel station. And those fuel station measures are included as part of the codes and requirements of those regulatory agencies, including the county. They also again, again, addressed general plan consistency. I do want to reiterate, this is a service oriented commercial center within the city's service commercial district. And then I do also want to note, I think the analysis that they're looking for for general plan consistency is not necessarily required for an MND that applies under 15125D, which relates to EIRs. However, analysis is included in the engine report and no specific inconsistencies were referenced by that comment letter. Project itself, as I mentioned, does require review from the planning commission, which was done at the December 7th, 2022 public hearing. One public comment was received at this, at the dais, just noting the benefits of a local trained workforce. The planning commission did receive the comment letter from Mitchell Si in preparation of that meeting and did receive staff's response. And with that discussion and all the facts that they had available at their disposal, they did recommend approval of the project. And so today, I am here before you to provide the public hearing and provide the planning commission's recommendation for approval of the project. Do you want to note, based on kind of the environmental elements as well, just especially for the newer city council members, as part of the environmental review, you're considering the environmental document and the public comments that were received on that and that the environmental document that was prepared reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis. And that based on that documentation, there is not substantial evidence that would indicate that, that there would be a significant impact on the environment with those mitigation measures identified. And then as part of the environmental review document, the city planning division is the keeper of those documentation. And then in that, you guys are adopting the mitigated negative desperation and mitigation monitoring reporting program as part of the project. And then I also do want to note as well that the conditional use permit approval occurs after the development agreement goes in effect. So as a ordinance, which I can read at the following slide, as that becomes in effect, the CUP is in effect as well. And I'll read it for first reading, which is ordinance number 419, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yucapá, proving a development agreement between the city of Yucapá and SG Opal, a California corporation to enable the development of a 66 room hotel and fuel station retail store project. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant is here as well and.
Thank you, Ben. Does the applicant have a presentation? Or just here to hear our findings?
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. My name is Jeffrey Scott. I am a special representative for the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council Carpenters. I live at 11999 Vista Way, just in between Second and Third Street. I live, work, play in the area. This is where I call home, grew up here. So this project definitely is going to impact me. That's what I take out Oakland, go up to the boulevard, head up the road. I believe that the city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from state certified apprenticeship training programs. Workforce requirements reduce construction related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled, Putting California on the High Road: A Job and Climate Action Plan for 2030, the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation. Furthermore, the South Coast Air Quality Management District also found that local hire requirements can reduce, can result in air, excuse me, reduce, result in air pollutant reductions, basically vehicle miles traveled. Also recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and Higher Jobs Act of 2022, otherwise known as AB 2011, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state certified apprenticeship programs for meeting certain siting affordability and development standards. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if there is no applicant rebuttal, I will close the public hearing and move on to council discussion. Is there any discussion of council?
I have a question. I know I'm a little chatty tonight, sorry. This isn't normal for me. When an applicant comes in, do we sometimes make suggestions to their project about other things they might want to consider with that project of other amenities?
To some degree, we'll work through them and kind of what their goal is for the project and certain ideas that they may have and try to find the best solution for that. And usually it comes, any project comes in as an idea from the developer of different uses that they want to do. And we try to provide feedback to provide kind of the best iteration of that project. And certainly through the site design, work with applicant to make some, some revisions and some ideas and then design elements that can help kind of tie that project in appropriately to the contents of where it's located.
The reason I ask is, is sometimes the city looks at the economics of where our funds are going, the leakage that leaves constituents are using their money in other areas to purchase things they can't get here for one reason or another. And when you have these projects that are down near the freeway where you've got hotels, restaurants, places to shop that might take some time, some of our other bordering and nearby cities are putting in these charging stations. And we don't have any in our city at this time. And so you've got, I'm sure there's probably a decent amount of folks in even in our city that have electric vehicles and people traveling back and forth through our corridor, that if we had some, not saying we have to have a plethora of them, but some in our area, if we might be capturing some of those funds that would otherwise be leaving, whether they are spending the night at the new hotel, this project that we're looking at, whether it's at a store nearby, then those, those things sometimes take a couple hours to charge. I just think we're kind of missing a mark a little bit on, on capturing some funds.
So I don't think it's shown on the plans as part of the California Building Code. They certainly do have to provide kind of the future EV network. But I believe the applicant does include some electric chargers as part of the project development.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
So, so when?
Are we taking consideration for our fire department having to deal with these three story buildings?
Yeah, so as part of the project review, we did confer with both the fire marshal and the fire chief. Usually when it comes to these three story structures, there's two different key elements that apply. One is certainly the typical access, you know, providing the vehicular movement for the fire truck to get around the site and providing the corners for the firefighting capability. The second element is related to kind of the roof access to the structure and providing those amenities. So we do have the ability to provide three story firefighting capability. It really comes down to is the building design and access to the roof structure and providing that detail through the building plan check process to make sure that there's enough space for when they have their ladder to go on place. That's a static ladder without the ladder truck in service. Then that way, they can reach the top of the structure. So we have worked through on other three story buildings, a few different design alternatives that help meet those requirements. And so those have been relayed to the architect on file for the project as well.
What would be the response time to a ladder going up there compared to a ladder truck?
So a ladder truck for a larger stretcher certainly is probably an easier thing. And so that certainly is, I think, part of the longer term capital improvement goals. Itself, it would be similar to any other building that they're trying to reach currently. So it really just comes down to, they have the same 32 foot ladder, so 28 feet with the incline. And really just making sure that there's a spot on the roof that's clearly identified that allows that connecting point to the roof of the stretcher as part of that. And so as part of other projects, we've been able to make those design elements included. And so even if you look at like the La Quinta Hotel, as part of the entrances along their north or their western, eastern wing is to meet those requirements. So it's usually try a subtle design stuff. There's been different ways we've done it through the years, but that would apply on this project as well.
So when did we get this? Because this, we, this is a lot of reading. I just got this here tonight at this meeting. This is a lot of reading. There's no way that we could be equipped to, to read this and know what this is, what's contained. contained in here, right? I mean, this, we get this today, you said?
So the public comment, yes, we did receive today, as noted. So as part of the two hundred and seventy-four pages, that it is only the first fourteen apply to this project itself. So the rest is just a, the air quality sheets and a memo from a two thousand twenty-one project in L A County, not even San Bernardino County, and then the resumes of their geologists that provided that air quality analysis. But only the first fourteen are germane to this project. And so as part of the slide I have here, I did try to verbalize a lot of those public comments that were received. And so if you were able to get through those initial pages, you've received the information that was provided, that would be germane to the project. And then certainly, the other comment letter, which was almost as lengthy, I think probably four pages shorter, was part of the plant commission notes, and so those were also summarized in the agenda report as well to provide kind of the reader's digest of all the points that were raised and staff's response to those points.
So I wonder why this particular project has warranted the attention of this particular carpenters' union when we built the three-story senior project on Ucaipa Boulevard, and there was no letter from an attorney sort of asking that we use prevailing wages. That was a private project there, wasn't it, or was it?
The project on Ucaipa Boulevard was a partnership, and therefore, I believe, was prevailing.
It was prevailing wage. Okay.
And certainly, I think the approach towards the environmental review process has become more complicated, and so there's more types of organizations that are looking at city decisions. And so as part of that, making sure that on our end, that as part of a public resource and public available document that identifies impacts that were robust on our analysis, to make sure that we safeguard the decisions made by the elected officials and plant commission on these projects.
Do we face any possible litigation if we approve this project tonight?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this individual and his law firm is a frequent litigator, I would say. They comment on projects throughout Southern California. They have certain asks that they ask that are included in their letter here. Is there a possibility of litigation? Yes, there is a possibility of litigation, I would say.
Councilman Garner, questions, comments of staff?
No.
So as the, for the benefit of Councilman Venable and Councilman Garner, we have discussed, as our city grows up and out, high rises and wide rises, the need for additional firefighting equipment. That is certainly something I believe, I'm sure this council will be discussing over the course of your time on this council. I've spoke to our fire chief. It is a concern and something we need to be mindful of as we approve future builds. We will take recommendations of our fire professionals seriously as we move forward. My question actually is relative to the signal lights controlling the intersection of Colorado and Oakland Road. As I received an email in the last two weeks from a concerned citizen relative to a traffic collision took place there, what is the timeline for a signal being installed and going active?
Hi, as Ben mentioned, the development agreement includes language that indicates it's a serious responsibility to design and construct, and I believe there's a deadline, there's a date in the development agreement, I believe it's the end of December of this year. So with the council approval of this item, we'll move forward with the design and construction of that. And that traffic signal is a phase of a larger project that's included in the approved capital improvement program. Recently, we completed the installation of the traffic signal at Ohio Ten Southern Live Oak. That is phase two. This will be phase three of that larger project.
Rough timeline. If you had to say before, you'll see the poles go install.
Our goal is to get the design going in the next thirty days, so we can get that completed in the next sixty days, and the polls ordered. As you, there's six to seven, I heard it's six to seven months now, and we can get construction going in the falls and complete it by the end of this year.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask staff to read the title of the ordinance. Is that the four nineteen you mentioned before already?
Yep, that is. I don't know if I need to read it again, or... Okay, I'll read it again. Ordinance number four nineteen, ordinance of the city council of the city of Ucaipa, approving a development agreement between the city of Ucaipa and S G Opal, California Corporation, to enable the development of a sixty-six room hotel and fuel station retail store project.
Thank you, Ben. Another motion?
I motion to approve Gen item eleven, subsections one through five.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, but no second. So at this time, the item will not proceed. Is there further discussion? You need to find yourself to make a motion, or are we...
I'd like to dig into it a little bit more before I...
Yeah, same here.
May I add some additional language or comments, I guess, to what the mayor referenced earlier? Staff has been given previous direction to work toward a, an approach with future applications of certain size and height. Four-story, for sure, which the next hotel in potential process seems to be moving towards a four-story hotel and a larger, certainly warehouse projects, that those types of projects going forward would be potentially conditioned for the kinds of equipment that Councilmember Venable suggested earlier, and that, given that this project was already in process, that it would not be subject to any of those new conditions. But the intent is for council, for staff, to come back to council with a policy for your consideration moving forward with those larger types of projects.
But my understanding is you don't need a ladder truck to do a three-story, otherwise we're in violation now with La Quinta Inn and also the project on the Boulevard.
That's true. I'm just worried about the safety of our people. That's what, in a matter of life and death, would you rather be coming down a ladder or having a ladder truck pick you up and send you down? I mean, that's my only big concern. But I do understand, but I'd just like to, I'd like to look into it a little bit more before I...
Can we forward this public hearing to another meeting and have this come back to us? Perhaps we can be more reversed and make a more informed decision at that time.
You have the option to continue this to the next council meeting, or...
That'd be great.
Indefinitely in terms of the timing, but I think the applicant would probably prefer a specific council meeting.
So would that need a vote to have a specific meeting? Okay. So with that said, then, I would like to motion that we return on the meeting of the January twenty-third, it's the next regular city council meeting, to have this public hearing before us again to make a decision. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Can I add the on-call onto that agenda?
On the...
You can certainly, as a council, with consensus, request that staff come back on the twenty-third for the record. We certainly can do that. That wouldn't be related to this item.
Right. Okay, then that would be my motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Okay. Moving on to announcements, is there any announcement from council? No? All right, Mr. City Attorney, can you please announce closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. There are two items on this evening's closed session. Let me get to that here on our agenda. It is, oh, Kim helpfully has it right here, public employment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven, performance evaluation dismissal appointment of city manager. Public, second item is public employment pursuant to government code five four nine five seven, performance evaluation dismissal appointment of city attorney, and there may be reportable action.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the regular city council meeting to closed session. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to reconvene this regular city council meeting of January ninth, twenty twenty-three from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. By a vote of five to zero, the city council voted to dismiss the city attorney. By a vote of five to zero, the city council voted to appoint me, Stephen Graham of the firm Cole Huber, as city attorney effective immediately. By a vote of three to two, with Councilmember Thorpe and Venable voting no, the city council voted to accept the retirement of city manager Ray Casey, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And by a vote of four to one, with Councilmember Thorpe voting no, the city council voted to appoint Chris Mann, city manager, effective March first, twenty twenty-three. Those are all the reportable actions out of closed session, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the regular city council meeting of January ninth, twenty twenty-three.